All right. Well, congratulations to all of the folks with the service milestones. We appreciate your service and appreciate all that you do. And it's great to have an opportunity to recognize that. We next have a presentation from Ken Abney from Car Rigs and Ingram regarding opportunity zones in Eddy County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. A lot of you know me, some of you don't. My name is Cindy Bryan. I'm the partner here in Carlsbad for Car Rigs and Ingram. We're an accounting and advisory firm. I have with me this morning Ken Abney. He's from our office in Louisiana. You know, the weather's a little different there and everything, but Ken does a lot of great work with people that are in the same type of industry we're in. He does a lot of work with people in the oil and gas industry and the drilling industry in Louisiana and does a lot of great work on opportunity zones and leveraging opportunities in opportunity zones. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Ken Abney from our New Orleans office.
Thank you, Cindy. I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and see if I could shed some light and some information on these new opportunity zones. It's great to have our New Mexico offices, Car Rigs and Ingram. We're the 19th largest firm in the country and we're spread out mostly through the southeast area. I'm born and raised from New Orleans and have been practicing the tax area my whole life. I drove in from El Paso yesterday and got to see all the flares and all the activities. So, as we work, you know, with man camps in Permian and Eagle Ford and all the different basins that are out there. So, really appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. I had a PowerPoint, but I'll just kind of go over a few things because I don't want to take, you know, your whole time and be certainly open to any questions to see if I can do some things. And one of the things that's interesting is the opportunity zone was established from the Tax Act that came back in 2017. And what I'm seeing around the country and of offices, because I do work in Georgia and Alabama, Mississippi, Louisiana with these, I'm in charge of this file firm, is how to leverage that. And what I mean by that is, right, as county commissioners or municipalities, you have access to certain funds and the key is can we take those funds and leverage it by bringing in private investment, public and private partnerships, right? And I have the fortune or unfortunate ability to see that what we did in Katrina in New Orleans. I lived through that, born and raised there. And what we saw a lot of after as we were rebuilding, which is a little bit different, but we had a lot of CBD monies that came in, a lot of different things, and we need to build hospitals, we need to build infrastructure and build areas. And we've done things, for example, there's a community that was completely wiped out called St. Pernod Parish, and we wound up taking some CBDG monies, about $30 million, where it wasn't enough to build a hospital. So, we actually twine that with, if you ever heard, New Market Tax Credit, which picked up another $20 million. So, we built a $50 million hospital with only $30 million of government monies. The rest came from tax credit equity in that syndication. So, it spurred the development of a hospital back in that community, which then brought in doctors' offices and residents coming back to that community as a vision and doing that. So, that's a simple example of leveraging. In New Orleans right now, we're closing a opportunity zone fund that is going to rebuild a old hospital there. It's a significant project and it's going to be combining opportunity zone monies with federal and state historic credits along with, it's a leased piece of property from the state. So, we're doing a long-term lease and again twining those three activities to help make the project successful. And it was an RFP process. So, part of that, and a lot of communities having workforce housing issues, right? So, the developers actually dedicated a certain percentage, like 40% of those apartments and units for workforce housing where the rents will be 70% of the market rate or something. So, we can afford to have the workers still living there. New Orleans is a community of hospitality, right? And if all the folks can't live there, then it's difficult to have that workforce. And you wind up pushing them out of the marketplace. So, those are the things that in planning happens to work together. So, for those that don't know the opportunity zone, it was set up and a lot of people weren't familiar with it, but each state got to designate 25% of its census tracts as designated opportunity zones. And that was supposed to be low-income communities. Now, what happened was the governors recognized and did that, but they also could do a continuous tract. So, it might have been a low-income tract plus a continuous tract. So, it wasn't always low income. And if you look right now, what's going in the political arena, there's several bills that are being introduced to maybe change some of that. There's, I read yesterday, there's almost five or six different bills to do that. The benefit of those tracts, right, from an investment standpoint, is that investor can take a capital gain, short or long term, and reinvest that gain into an opportunity zone fund. By doing that, they get to defer the tax on that gain. If they hold that investment in a fund for seven years, they pay tax on only 85% of the gain. Then after 10 years, they could sell the investment and pay no tax on the appreciation. So, it's three benefits. So, if I had, I'll use a round number, a million-dollar gain, I could not pay tax on that and invest it into an opportunity zone fund. So, I have no tax on that gain. Then what happens is after seven years, I only pay tax on 85% of that gain. So, if it was a million dollars, I only pay tax on 85% of that, $50,000. After 10 years, if that property or that investment's worth $2 million and I sell it, I pay no tax on the appreciation. And that's the incentive. The thought process was there was a significant amount of appreciation in the marketplace, unrealized gains. So, somebody bought Apple stock and bought it cheaply, bought it at, you know, $50, and now they have a million-dollar gain. They didn't want to sell it because they had to pay tax. You could sell that stock and not pay tax on gain and use that gain to invest in an opportunity zone fund. You could sell another piece of property and do it and reinvest in an opportunity zone fund. So, it's private investment which offers those incentives. The rules, the IRS was a little slow in getting the rules out. It was enacted in January 17. They came out with a first set of proposed regs and later that in 18, and they just came out with a second set in April of 19 and were expecting a little bit more guidance hopefully before Thanksgiving. And so, that's been some of the slowness in trying to get this working. And I know local governments and investors have struggled with how to do this. We're starting to see more activity in it as people are working with these rules. Again, one of the big challenges, it is private investment, right? So, folks are, investors are using, it's at-risk money. So, if the deal goes bad, they lose their money. Second thing is, there's been discussions about not as many people participating. Well, because it's a private investment, you need investors that understand investing. You need, you know, credited investors. So, people who put out and create these funds have been a little bit reluctant because they haven't been able to find the money. So, all that impacts governments because you guys have responsibilities to say, how do we create a vision in this census tract to attract private investment? And so, what I'm seeing is, I'll give you, I have an outline I can give you. What I'm seeing is, again, a vision, and actually, New Mexico actually has a pretty good website I found. It's called, it's The Governance Project. And there's actually an outline in that that talks about how to go through the planning process, and I printed it out. It talks about the steps that municipalities and communities can do to help encourage investment into these opportunity zones and doing that. And I found it pretty useful from that, as a tool, because the challenge is, how do I pick an area that I want to foster development and attract private investment? And you saw recently, too, a lot of the government offices, HUD, DOTD, they've been charged with their grant and the money to go into these opportunity zones as well. So, ability to leverage HUD grants or DOTD grants. Let's suppose the area that you're looking at needs some infrastructure. Well, private investment's going to be more likely to want to go into a spot, right, where that the commission or the city or the state is building some infrastructure that's going to attract the investment from a vision standpoint. Another group, another city that I've seen a lot of, if you look at Erie, Pennsylvania, they're probably one of the folks that have jumped on this really quickly. They've got a whole website with projects that are coming up. And they've actually started a program where they're actually reaching out to people that used to live there, saying, hey, invest back in our community. Here's our vision of what we have and how we're going to develop that from that standpoint. So, that's kind of an overview of the things, the processes going through it. It's been probably slower than people have wanted to go. And I use this question, so I'll ask you, you may have heard it. Have any of you ever heard of what they call a 1031 exchange? Anybody in real estate? It's people, generally, most taxpayers and people have done, have heard of a 1031 exchange where you can sell a piece of real estate and buy another real estate, right? Well, again, it's common, common. I see a couple shaking their head and probably people have heard of it. Well, that came out in 1986. And when I asked that question, I do it for a point because what 1031 is, it's Internal Revenue Code Section 1031. It's actually a statute, right? And so, then I asked the question, has anybody heard of a gentleman named Starke, S.T.A.R.K.E.R.? They say, no. Well, if it wasn't for Mr. Starke who went to court that tried this deferred exchange, none of us would be doing 1031 exchanges. And that case happened sometime after 1031 came up. So, the challenge with opportunity zones is the legislation came out in January of 17, December of 17, and we're just getting guidance on how to put it together. So, it takes a little bit of that, you know, that guidance and that walking through the process to get to the point where then everybody could freely use it because unfortunately in tax law, words have meanings, right? And so, when somebody writes something, it might reference a piece of tax law that's been there for a while. So, I've had, I guess, been around for a while, been practicing since 1986 and did my first IRS audit in 1981 to defend my family shrimp boat business as I graduated out of high school. So, my background's been a little bit diverse. So, I think understanding how that law works and then trying to put it with a vision of what you see for your city and your area and how to leverage those dollars, I think is going to be important and do that.
Are you aware of the opportunity zones in Eddy County? We can find them on the website, but I'll give you a general idea. There's a strip of one inside the city that runs from about here down through the river, through the Cascades, down around the New Albertsons and around that area. And in Eddy County, it's basically the southeast corner of Eddy County is entirely an opportunity zone. So, we have a big area where we could do some vision planning in Eddy County. It is, again, the southeast corner of Eddy County. It's not right up here, you know, where we are, but there's a lot of activity out there in that southeast corner of Eddy County.
And didn't you say you had another one here?
Yeah, it's right here, right through where we are. Our office is over on Halle Guano Street. It's in that opportunity zone. The New Albertsons is in the opportunity zone. The Cascades is in the opportunity zone. So, there's a lot of opportunity in the city as well, based on the positioning of that opportunity zone here.
And what we have seen is some of these are in some downtown areas in New Orleans. There's some downtown areas. And what's nice is we, again, twine them with maybe some federal historic tax credits, if it's old building, because one of the requirements is the property has to be newly acquired, so you have to renovate it. So, we'll combine it with federal historic credits and we'll combine it with state historic credits. And then we'll get, maybe the local government will do the sidewalk grants to redo it at that rate. And then we get maybe, I've seen them combined with TIFs and tax abatements and, you know, all the little incentives that might make a bad, might make a bad deal good, but it might get to the point where now you attract enough investment in an area of the city where you haven't had it before. And that's what I see a lot of folks. I'll give credit to one of the folks I'm working with. He's actually in New Orleans now and he's part of my outline, is a gentleman by the name of Bo Kemp. It's, he has a unique experience that I've leaned on a little bit. He worked for Cory Booker as mayor of New York. He was the COO of Newark, New Jersey, then worked for Cory Booker at the US Senate and then worked with the Indiana, Gary Indiana mayor as a senior advisor. And he actually works with, he's been hired by a group of the city to kind of help put together their vision. He's working with the council of mayors. I work mostly on the private side. He's more of a public side and somebody I've leaned on, again, because that's a unique experience when you serve as a CEO of a mayor and understand those different things. And so, he's actually advising another mayor, I can't remember what, in New Mexico. But that's a, you know, because there are different challenges sitting in your seat than my seat for sure. So, I just want to give him credit because he gave me some information about some things on the municipal side and the public side.
So, I guess, one thing to point out, a couple of, I think at the last commission meeting, we handed out a flyer. Mr. Abney's going to present his full presentation at 1 o'clock this afternoon at the City Annex Building in the council chambers.
I believe it's at 11:00.
11:00, okay.
Yes, uh-huh. And yes, in the, it says the mayor's training room. So, yeah, it's there somewhere at the city. I'm not familiar with that exact location, but it's over there in the big, it's over there in the big pink building.
It's a little bit of a ride. It's the first time I did that ride. It's a, I need to bring my spot from my boat. If you break down out there, there's nothing out there.
He says, that is a long stretch of nothing. I said, oh, yeah.
No, it's.
There's a lot between here and El Paso. What are you talking about?
I have an e-purb on my boat. I said, I should have added my car. No, I enjoyed the ride. It was quite soothing for sure, so.
But Mr. Abney has prepared a full presentation that.
Yeah, I've got a.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple of them. So, and I'm available through Cindy for questions or something like that. I was hopeful just to give you some information and what I'm seeing in some different areas. And I'm happy to answer any questions or do what I can to assist in the process.
And I can absolutely get you any information that we have, any that Ken has. Obviously, I asked him here, our firm asked him here because of his experience in similar situations, you know, and working with the oil and gas industry as well. So, he's doing a great job there in New Orleans for them, a great resource for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Ernie. Thank you, Kaz. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Thank you for having us.
Nobody asked you. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from the NMED and I believe Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I know it says my name on the agenda, but it's going to actually be Bill Williams and Pete Mitchell from NMED giving a presentation, so I wanted to word my agenda properly. But they're going to be presenting to you this morning. And we have our code enforcement officers here to assist with.
This is in reference to the recently posted active map of liquid waste in Eddy County. So, it's a, it's a pretty relevant topic here, so.
I have a presentation. And I'm not sure who Bill Mitchell is, but I think, my name's Bill Chavez. Good morning. I am with the New Mexico Environment Department. Peter Mitchell is one of our field specialists. He actually works out of Las Cruces, but's been spending a lot of time here in Las Cruces. Also, want to acknowledge one more person, staff person that's here with NMED. She's the Southeast Area Manager. Her name's Shannalara. Been doing a lot of work. I have a quick presentation and we're going to leave some room for questions at the end. Just want to do a really quick overview of what we've been dealing with, the challenges with wastewater and RVs. And we'll talk a little bit more about, you know, pumping and illegal dumping as well. So, just provide a quick overview of what we've been dealing with, provide some basic wastewater statistics. We'll pull up the map that we recently posted to kind of show what we're doing with that and then briefly go over some of the next steps on further enforcement. So, NMED has been working with RV sites for, it's well over a year. We've identified over 150, we issued 150 NOVs within the last year and a half. RV sites range from two RVs to 200 RVs. Large percentage of these sites found to have surface discharge or raw sewage whenever we've actually done the inspections and issued the NOVs. Meeting with the county recently, it seems like updated information show that the number of non-compliance sites are, is going to be over 200. And NMED, and I really want to point this out, that NMED is, has been working very closely with Eddy County and their code enforcement officer in a collaborative effort, and I think that's really key. The other things that we were dealing with in, with these RV camps is that obviously they don't have municipal sewers. First thing that comes to mind is that they need a septic system. RV waste isn't typical waste like in your household, so if they wanted to put a conventional septic system, that probably wouldn't be allowed because RV waste, because of chemicals, kind of provides a challenge and kind of a limitation for some of these folks. Along with the properly permitting of these systems, we've got all this wastewater that we need to get rid of. So, we're dealing with challenges with pumping and pumpers and illegal dumping that's going, going on throughout the county in southeast New Mexico. And there is also limited options for approved dump sites. You know, the main dump sites would be the wastewater treatment plants in some of these towns. And for example, as we understand, the wastewater treatment plant here in Carlsbad is accepting RV waste, but only from pumpers that they've have approved prior. They're not accepting any new pumpers in the area, so. I just wanted to put kind of things into perspective when we talk about how much wastewater we're generating. I just used a figure of 5,000 RVs located in Eddy County. This isn't a number that, you know, I got, I just used as a figure. It may be less, it may be work, it may be more. But we've learned based on water meter readings on some of these RV parks that each RV is using on the average of 40 to 50 gallons per day. They take showers in the morning, you know, they use the restroom. So, I just did the quick math. We're talking about 250,000 gallons per day of wastewater from, so it's a huge, huge, huge number. Hopefully, this link will work. It did earlier. And you guys may have seen this map. This is a map that our IT department helped worked, worked with us. And what we've done is identified the sites that we've issued NOVs to. Each of those dots represent a certain site that an NOV was issued. I'm just going to randomly pick a site and it has a case file, it has basic information, but it also has a link to documents. And in these documents, we've listed the actual NOV that we've issued and pictures of each of the sites. So, this is the extent of the map. And really, the intent of what we wanted to do with this map is just to get the public awareness and hopefully get some action on some of these people to come in and come into compliance and get properly permitted. So, I'm not going to go in any further into any of these pictures. I just randomly picked this one. Let me get out of this and get back to the presentation. I'm going to probably close everything out here, so. And then just the last thing I wanted to talk about is the enforcement. We've issued out the NOVs. It's like I had mentioned, it has been over a year that we've been trying to deal with people. There has been a small percentage of people that have come in and actually gotten properly permitted. But some of our next steps for enforcement, we can go through magistrate court. We have a internal administrative compliance policy. Then there's penalties that we can assess through the environment department that goes in front of a hearing officer. And then there's also in our septic regulations, you know, the ability through due process to disconnect service or water so we can discontinue the discharge of raw sewage. Support Eddy County, county enforcement efforts. I put that in there because I know Eddy County, county enforcement has also been going through the magistrate route and we just want to support that. And the last thing I have here is prioritizing sites. As with Eddy County, the environment department, we've got two inspectors in this office. One is actually a vacant position and we've been trying to fill it, it's like anything in southeast New Mexico. We've been trying to fill that position. We've advertised it three times. So, we're pretty limited in resources. As I mentioned, Peter has been doing most of the work. He's, he actually lives in Las Cruces and Shanna covers the whole southeast part of the state, but she's actually spent about 75% of her time here. So, by saying prioritizing sites, I'm saying that, you know, this is a huge elephant and we're just have to take it one bite at a time. We are going to identify the sites that are most egregious and go from there as far as further enforcement. Obviously, the best thing we'd like is just to get people in. We want to work with them and get them into compliance with, you know, getting a proper, proper system. The last thing I wanted to end with, and I thought it was pretty relevant, is one of our inspectors, you know, about six months ago, had a call from a gentleman that owns five acres, an elderly gentleman. He's one of these sites that I think has RVs. I'm not sure if it's 10 or 15 RVs on there. He actually gave us a call and said, you know, what do I need to do? And as you all know, these RV sites charge $600, $500, $600 per. He says, I've been broke my entire life. I live on social security. I haven't been able to get, you know, get in buy and now this opportunity came to me and I'm able to finally do what I need to. So, we see that as a business opportunity, but we also want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, we're in this to protect the environment and protect public health. So, that's all I have and I'll just open it up to any questions that you all may have.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to our code enforcement and to you guys as well because this is a hot topic and as commissioners, of course, we get a lot of calls, as does our county personnel. Just having you guys here and the article that was in the paper is just really sparked a lot of interest and I think we'll start seeing more and more people come forward because I've already gotten a few calls and passed them on to county personnel. So, I just want to say thank you, but no questions.
Thank you all for the support.
In your, in your regs, you're requiring as far as sewer treatment plans, you know, you can get the, it's not a full-fledged sewer treatment plant, but you can get those, you can get those put in. Those are being required to discharge 100 gallons of water per day. Your information is saying that it's maybe between 40 and 50. Are you guys working on anything to bring the, to bring those two numbers a little closer together to allow for more RVs based on the numbers and the actual, and the actual.
Yeah, our code, pardon me, Commissioner.
No, no, sir.
Our code specifies that an RV spot would, we size it at 100 gallons per day.
Yes, sir.
If somebody comes in and they water, they have water meters and they can show that the use is less than $100, $100 a day, 100 gallons per day, then we can actually go with that figure, but it would have to go through water meters. And there's been a few sites that were actually using water meter usage as opposed to the set 100 gallons per day.
That's a great idea, you know, because like you said, if we, if we're not doing, you know, everything we can to get rid of it, it ends up in places we don't want.
Right.
So, that's a, that's a great idea and why you guys were doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
What has been the average fine on those NOVs?
Our actual NOVs is kind of like a warning. So, the next step would be we can go through an administrative compliance order and for, under our penalties, it would be $1,000 per violation. So, if I identify three violations at a site, then it would be $3,000. So, our penalties is $3,000 per violation.
Pretty hefty, yeah. Good? Have we shut anything down?
Not as, not as yet.
So, when you identify those violations, what is the next step? I mean, you give them so many days to come into compliance?
Yes, sir.
How long is that?
Depending on how serious it is, if you go to a place that there's sewage all over the place and kids running around with their bikes, you know, that's five days. It's five to 10, so we've got the ability to do that. So, five to 10 days to come into our office and at least start talking and filling out applications or whatever they need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to kind of echo what Commissioner Crockett said. I really appreciate y'all's help. I know your department isn't just chasing sewer. Y'all've got everything else, too. So, and y'all are kind of short-staffed, so we appreciate all the help. Thank y'all for doing it and helping us out, so.
We had a conference call yesterday evening with Bill and Pete and a few others to talk about this. The county has had a couple of instances where we've gone to magistrate court, right? And those are misdemeanors. So, it's $300 and up to 90 days in jail. That's an arduous path and even at, even at $1,000 on a, on a, on the, taking the other path per violation, in the scheme of what some of these parks are taking in and rand is, doesn't matter. are, um, taking in and randers, doesn't matter, right? It doesn't. So, we've, we've been trying to strategize on how we might, um, encourage self-compliance. But I think a way we've looked at is finding an egregious offender and trying to really bring that to, to bear and, and, and into compliance and if you'd like, creating an example of what the county and NMED is prepared to do to, to stop this risk, right? Um, it, we, we can talk later with, uh, with, um, Mr. McCroskey and, and code enforcement group, but there, there's, there's the large numbers you saw on the map, um, and we continue to provide information to NMED to update the map. Um, but it is, it, it's, it's beginning to pose a risk for public health in, in the county. And so, we're, we, we have some ideas on, and a strategy that we'll work on and bring back to say, here's, here's our proposal. And we talked about that last evening and so we'll, those will be some of the next steps we do to, to try and help, um, move for more compliance, um, and, and risk reduction in the county for these, these types of conditions, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that presentation very much. We'll move now to the trailing agenda. And, um, first item there on the trailing agenda is the education plan. Um, Ms. Vasquez will give us a brief update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Um, I'm here to introduce Ms. Michelle Tanchin. She's from the Education Trust Board of New Mexico. She's here to give a brief presentation on the education plan, which is New Mexico's Five Twenty-Nine College Savings Plan that we would like to offer.
So, for those of you who aren't familiar with the Five Twenty-Nine, we're a tax advantaged way to save for college. So, what happens is an, um, a person would open an account. Everything that they put into that account gets written off on their state income tax. It's gonna grow tax-free. Whoever's gonna use that, um, account for education gets to pull it out tax-free. So, it's gotta be used for education. There's over two hundred different expenses, though, that they can use it for. So, it's not just tuition. So, it goes above and beyond the lottery scholarship. So, you can use it for room and board, books, fees, supplies, all that good stuff as well. Um, and it's not just for kids. So, you can, your employees could use it to go back to school, continue their educations, um, kid, for their kids, for their grandkids. So, there's a lot of flexibility within it. The reason I'm here today, though, is because we can actually offer it as a benefit to your employees so that they can actually pull it straight out of their paycheck. Um, what we have found is that if you don't have the money to, to start with, right? You don't see it, then you don't spend it and so it actually goes into the account. Um, and so, this is a great way to do it. I have some information that I'll hand out to y'all. Um, it's very easy for you as employers to provide this to your employees as, as the county. Um, Donia Anna is one that does it. Lonnie Davis over there loves this plan, so if you have any questions and you don't, don't trust me, you can give her a call. Um, but this is, um, it, there is no obligation for you as an employer and there's no contract for you to sign. You don't have any fiduciary responsibilities. It's simply a, a, a helping hand to your employees to start the process and to open the accounts. And so, we make it as simple as possible for you so that all you have to do is, um, they, they open an account, they provide you with the account number and how much money they want to go in there each paycheck or each month. Um, and then once a month, you send in that information and that's about it. So, if there's any questions I can answer, that would be, I think it's good.
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's the information.
It will give those to HR and, uh, you can, you're, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
The next item on, go. You good? Next item on the agenda is, uh, to approve the commission meeting minutes for November fifth, twenty nineteen.
Do we have any corrections or anything? All right. Saying none, we'll look, uh, entertain a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for November fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I have no further discussion. Please call for the vote.
Catching.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Thank.
Crockett.
Yes.
The next item is, um, special commission meeting minutes to approve for November twelfth, twenty nineteen, which was the voting canvas.
Anyone have any corrections? There's a pretty lengthy one. No?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special commission meeting minutes for November twelfth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Catching.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
And the next item for approval is the expense approval report for October twenty nineteen.
Anybody have anything they wanna question?
No, sir.
No? Saying no questions, we'll look for a motion to approve expense approval report for October twenty nineteen.
I make a motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Catching.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the declaration of local disaster in Eddie County and then Ms. Armaderas is here to talk to us about that.
Morning, Jennifer.
Morning.
And Jason.
Drag him up here.
Sidekick.
We, uh, basically just need permission to declare a local disaster in order to, um, qualify to go through, um, the state for assistance for our damages.
But we're related to?
The flood in October. And Jason can tell you, there's sixteen, I believe, at least sites?
There's about sixteen sites. They're all in the Artesia area. Um, we had minor damage out through Dark Canyon, um, but the majority of this was down Eagle Draw, north of Artesia. Um, we've already done the assessment. We're looking that we're over, um, I think we're in about the one point five to two million dollar range. And, uh, we've reported this DHSC and we just need your approval to move forward with it.
And I spoke to Homeland Security this morning. They have taken that to the Deputy Secretary and Cabinet Secretary for signature, so we're just waiting on that.
Question?
No, sir.
Question?
No.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve the declaration, uh, of local disaster in Eddie County?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Catching.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, um, we now have, I think, Fire Services to talk about Riverside Volunteer Fire Department purchase of a Skeeter truck. Uh, Mr. Mack is not well today and so Mr. Chavaria, Travis and...
Good morning.
Good morning, guys.
How's it going? Most of y'all know me, Chris Chavaria. I have my Assistant Chief Andres Ruggín with me today. Um, we're, uh, here to talk about our Skeeter brush truck that we're looking at, uh, buying out of sixty percent, uh, funding. So, our current brush truck's, uh, nineteen ninety-seven. Um, it holds two hundred and eighty gallons of water. And as of this weekend, we are currently having some electrical issues with it, so, uh, we're looking at, um, we're, we're looking at getting that fixed until we can get our new Skeeter. Um, this new one's got, uh, it carries five hundred gallons of water. Um, will be used primarily for grass fires, um, but we will be using it for off-road rescue, uh, out in the San Dune. Since we do cover, upcover Local Hills Fire District, uh, majority of their district's in the San Dune. Our current big trucks aren't four-wheel drive, so we can't get them out and about, so it'd be nice to have something out there, uh, to get us around. So, um, we are, we are asking for sixty percent money because we are in, in the process of getting our four thousand gallon tanker, um, that we are paying out of our budget. So, um, I just spoke with the representative last week. Our truck for our tanker was delivered last week to the factory, so we should be getting that truck in February.
So, this is a, an accounting change. We have the money, it's moving it from the sixty percent fund into this expense item, so it's a, it's not a budget adjustment. It's a, an accounting matter within our, uh, making this a project within finance.
Mr.?
No, as long as you guys have the money, I'm fine with that.
I wish Josh was here to present it, but I guess he's out sick.
Do you have questions?
So, no. No questions.
No? Y'all did a good job the other night when I was at the fire board, so it sounds like a good plan.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Riverside Volunteer Fire Department Skeeter Type Five brush truck coming out of the sixty percent fire excise tax fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Catching.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Item number five is another, um, accounting measure. We have, um, twelve thousand dollars that was in the administration fund and we're gonna move it into the finance fund, um, for the finance director position as we've discussed.
Any discussions?
No.
Saying no discussions, we'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the twelve thousand dollars from administration services to the finance director position. A second, Ed.
Have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Catching.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the resolution and agreement of consent agenda.
Anyone have anything to pull?
No, sir.
Nothing you'd like to pull? Anybody? Good? All right. We'll look for a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
I make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Catching.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Awesome.
Exciting. I get to stay until I win. We can slow down if you want. I gotta, I gotta hang out anyways, so I might as well hang out with y'all.
We have got to the exact set.
No, no. I'll take you to lunch.
All right. The next item, well, so here you go.
Yeah. Jason, so I'm sure this will slow it down.
Mr. Burns, would you like to provide a brief update?
I'll just ask for questions.
Perfect.
Well, your number one is back for this meeting.
Oh, no.
Still.
Sorry. You left. I got replaced.
Oh, wow.
Sorry. Okay. Guys, I'll apologize for the, uh, size of the font this morning. I really would. Um, I'm gonna try to where we can present this and have it on your monitors for you to read. Uh, we'll try to have that for the next meeting. So, just a very brief from the North Road Department, or the South, we'll start with the South. Um, they're working on US Refinery Road. I would also like to report that, um, we did get approval from NMDOT. They donated all the millings within the county. It's about twenty-two thousand four hundred cubic yards of millings that we'll be able to go, uh, collect and place on our county roads. So, that was, uh, a good deal that we were able to work with them on. Um, we're doing US Refinery and then we have another crew on, uh, the Dell City Blade and Tidwell Shoulder work. And then our trucking crew continues to do several things with cattle guards and London Road potholes and, uh, just the continuous reports that come in. Um, speaking of the reporter, the reporter is up on the website and we're, uh, updating that within a bi-weekly basis. So, if you go to the Public Works homepage, it is right off to your right-hand side in that margin with the updated road tracker and you can see what's been completed and what's being reported and we're updating that bi-weekly, so.
That's a good improvement.
Yes, sir. The North Department, they're finishing up CR two fifty-two and they finished two thirty-five last week. So, two thirty-five was in real bad condition and, um, we've got several reports of the good improvements. We've gone out and looked at that one and that was a good one to get done.
Good job on that.
And then they continue with their various improvements that they're doing throughout with potholes and cattle guards. Uh, Public Works Projects, we, um, we finished Muscatell last week, so that one is paved and should be back opened. We're, uh, coordinating with the city to have that one striped when they do Muscatell, so it'll be a continuous all the way through. We are, uh, have a meeting this afternoon on Black River Village. We're still hoping to have that one procured by the, right at the beginning of the year. We had an update from the road assessment last week and they're about seventy percent complete and we scheduled several workshops to begin, uh, building decision trees and, uh, implementing the information that they're finding on our road assessment to be ready to present that, hopefully, within the first quarter of next year. Um, North Twenty-Six, they were able to go out and core that one. We should have a section ready to present.
Wow. Really? You're alarmed.
I know, right?
Time's up.
Sit down. That's actually our, uh, road assessment people. Um, we begin to work on our county right-of-way permitting process. We're starting a draft that will have that one ready to present right up to the first of the year. And then we're scheduled to do the intersection of Old Cavern and Bounce here next week. They'll push that back due to the weather forecast and they're gonna start that one on Monday. The landfill, um, the main thing I would like to report on the landfill is we will begin on Monday, accepting credit cards at the landfill for payment. That's something that we haven't done before.
There you go.
Yay.
And they got the equipment in and they're starting on Monday to accept credit cards.
Are we gonna make a, do a PSA or something, Jerry? Strong? Are we gonna do a PSA on that?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
That was kinda like rhetorical, yes, you are.
Yes, yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Being awesome.
Um, we, uh, starting Monday, yeah. Starting Monday. So, I'm sure that'll have a few bugs we need to work out, but that is in place and we'll begin working through those and start, um, that's a good step forward on that. Um, we also have a couple plans, a Sandpoint landfill plan and an illegal dumping plan that I'm working with Mr. Davis. I don't know when would it be appropriate to present those. We were doing a lot of good things with illegal dumping in the landfill that we'll be ready to present here soon. We also had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Smith this morning and we're gonna go on a PR campaign with the, uh, items and the plans that we're gonna be implementing here soon. So, with that, I'll stand for questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I had a call from one of my constituents in, in, uh, the Malaga area in which whenever we did the, uh, Onsuris Road, that we chipped that road whenever it was drizzling rain and, and cold. Have we been out to inspect that because that's not ideal conditions to chip anything?
I was trying not to talk about that one. We do have some issues with Onsuris Road that we're not gonna accept as a county.
Thank you.
So, we're, we've already addressed that with the contractor and the contractor agrees with us a hundred percent, and, um, agrees that he probably pushed the weather a little too much, and, um, is going to make that one right. So that one is a issue that we are aware of, that we did have our construction inspector on, and is documented through our construction inspector, and he is aware of, and we are addressing that one, so.
Thank you.
Your construction inspector also did catch some other issues that were avoided.
Yes, sir.
So I, I don't.
Yeah, it's, um, case in point, we, uh, the, on a, the contractor accidentally brought a load of base course that he was about to mix in the chip seal. Yeah, we were able to catch that one and avoid that. So the construction inspector is learning what his point is out there, and that's the kind of things that we're avoiding, and that'll be good for the county from here on, so.
Good job.
Keep it up.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
Four minutes.
For sure, you could have a lot more than that.
Ish.
Put a such a long shoulder in there.
And, uh, we're here from Fire Services, Mr. Mack's out, as I mentioned, so Travis is going to step in.
Morning, Travis.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, how are you all doing today?
Good, how about you?
Oh, just lovely. All right, uh, with, uh, Mr. Mack out, he, uh, told me this morning that, uh, really the only update that he has is, uh, with the Loving, um, changeovers and stuff, uh, the mayor was wanting to talk, uh, here after the beginning of the year. Uh, as far as things go, uh, within the Fire Service, it's getting busy again with the changing weather, so all of the heaters and fireplaces and stuff like that are starting to come on, have some heating issues. We've had a couple of fires related to heaters here recently, so, uh, just ask everybody be mindful of that when it comes time to starting up your fireplace and heaters, to be sure to have your heaters cleaned and checked beforehand if you're using space heaters, uh, in your office, in your house, whatever, keep them away from combustibles. And, um, then I'm myself, well, if you all know about, uh, Fire Service, the Training Center, how it came about, um, Martha Chapman had Nana's Village that was wanting to be built as a, a fire prevention area for kids mainly. Uh, that never really got off the ground. Uh, I've been trying to figure out a way of going ahead and starting getting that going, uh, getting partnered up with, uh, people to get those, um, little, uh, buildings built. What we're looking at is like smaller scale churches, homes, businesses, that we can go through and teach different types of fire prevention through, um, and get that area cleaned up and, uh, done up. And so that's kind of some of our, uh, long-term goals for the, for the site. Also, uh, working with WIP on, uh, possibility of a confined space prop, so some, uh, new stuff starting. Any questions?
Couple of other things, uh, as Travis mentioned, there's some extenuating circumstances with the folks in the Village of Loving, and so it'll be January before we can resolve that, and so Fire Services and, and the other, the FDs will continue to respond to situations there until we can finish that out, but it's, it won't be until later in January. Have we set that meeting? Well, we can't. We've tried, but because of these circumstances, it won't be until January. There's, talk to you about what they are later, but it's, it's personal, I guess is what it must be. Um, and then, um, Mr. Mack and Mr. Chavaria continue to work with Rita on the communications update. They're working with Motorola for the new map coverage updates. There've been some testing with some temporary towers up in Artesia. Didn't quite go as planned, but we're working to continue to resolve that. Um, so that's an ongoing effort to try and come to terms on getting the communications, um, together in what we hope is a unified form and fashion to proceed, so continue to work that.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And, um, I guess this is a good opportunity to introduce Mr. Jerry Fanning. Um, for those of you that haven't met Mr. Fanning, he's, um, started as the Public and Government Affairs Director for the county in support of the memorandum of understanding we have between the cities of Artesia and Carlsbad and the county. So, Mr. Fanning.
Is this thing on? Great. Uh, first of all, let me take the opportunity to thank the commission, uh, the cities of Carlsbad and Artesia for selecting me for this opportunity to, to serve the citizens of New, of Artesia and Carlsbad and the, and the Eddy County area. Uh, I, I want to let you know, I'm very proud of this opportunity, and I'm excited about it. Uh, it's one of those kind of jobs that I guess, as an old guy, I've dreamed about for a long time, and I think it's going to allow me to actually, hopefully, go out in something positive as I look at my life and my career in, in a few years, hopefully, if you guys put up with me that long, uh, that we're going to see some great things done. I want to tell you that it's been an interesting, uh, first six days on the job. It's been very exciting. You have a fantastic staff here. Everyone has been so gracious and welcoming and helping me here at the office, uh, learning where everyone is, and of course, I've already forgotten most of it, but, but at the same time, it, it's been very refreshing, uh, to be able to come into someplace new and, and have the kind of support that I've seen so far. Hopefully this morning, I was going to let you know just a little bit of a, what my weeks look like, other than just the initial orientation and understanding policies and procedures of the, of the county, and there's still a lot more to learn, but, uh, some of the things that I've looked at is I, I've looked at some potential legislation that could be coming up during the legislature that might affect indirectly or directly, um, the, the citizens of the county. Uh, everyone, like I said, we've, we've been looking at, at different possibilities, uh, things that are actually out there that are happening, things that are potentially going to happen at the legislature, and we've got a pretty tight window to, to start looking at all that and getting ready for those things to happen. Um, I attended a, a hearing on the fourteenth that was put on by NMED and NMOCD concerning the, the reuse of produced water, which is a big issue that the county's interested in, I know, as far as being able to use, possibly use produced water on our roads. These hearings are actually, uh, developing some new regulations under NMED jurisdiction. NMOCD has the, uh, authority over produced water, uh, in the oil patch, but this is looking at regulations that would possibly set standards for produced water when it's being used off of the oil and gas uses. In other words, like we're interested in, possible using it on roads and things like that. It is an interesting process that they have done, and that was through House Bill five thirty-six last year, which gave them more authority over, uh, setting these type of regulations outside of NMED, and also looking at how to, uh, penalize the improper use or disposal and, uh, of produced water. Uh, that's, uh, my history with oil and gas and with the regulatory process, raised probably as many questions as it did answers. I am very, uh, feel like we should get very involved in this process and, and hopefully putting together some formal comments that we could produce during this, uh, regulatory process with NMED, and express some of our desires, what we would like to see come out of this regulatory process that would allow us to do that. My fear is, is that, as I've dealt with this over the years, is that we don't want it to become a stumbling block to our ideas as far as reuse of produced water. I can tell you this, the other folks that are involved in this type of process are very involved, and they have concerns about the reuse. I think some of the newspaper kind of, uh, highlighted a few of those things last week. Uh, so if we want to get what we need or any portion thereof, we're going to have to be involved in that process. And I, and I plan to take that as a, as a part of my new position, to, to look into that very closely. I've also, uh, been familiarizing myself on the new EIS that the, uh, that the Air Force has come out with. Uh, it's been brought to my attention by the city and also by, uh, Manager Davis, that uh, they are having hearings concerning the use of airspace for training in southeast New Mexico. Uh, raises some concerns and some issues there that might affect our, uh, air, uh, flights in and out of the area, whether it be from emergency, uh, situations to private aircraft to commercial aircraft. There is a hearing tomorrow night in Artesia. I plan on attending that, collecting as much information for the commission as possible, get back to us, and also look at that possibility of trying to develop some comments, formal comments, and, and hopefully, Mr. Taber might want to help assist me on some of these. He's looking at me, and I know that's what he's thinking, and we're, I'm excited about him helping me, so we can get that, maybe hopefully get that done together. Uh, it is a, it is a big issue, but, uh, we have an opportunity, and if we don't take the opportunity to comment, then we'll get what they give us. That's the way the process works, right? Um, I also want to thank, uh, uh, Mr. Davis and the rest yesterday for allowing me to sit on the presentation you saw this morning from M, NMED on liquid waste. Uh, that is also a big topic that, uh, is not just for this area, but it could reach into other areas as far as oil and gas, and even into produced water and what we're looking at as far as illegal dumping in the field. So, uh, there are a lot of things that I've already jumped on this week, and I'm sure there's going to be more to come, and, uh, once again, thank you for the opportunity, and if you have any questions, I'm open for questions.
Commissioner.
If you have any questions, we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm excited that you're here, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I don't have any questions necessarily, but I did want to, to point out, because I've had a few questions asked of me over the last week, what, why do we have this? What, what's the need for it? And I, I think it's important, what you just said is exactly why we have this position. There is a ton of stuff going on in this state that we have got to be way more active in and way more knowledgeable about than what we have been to this point, and I think we're getting what we're getting because we, we haven't been, I, I think we do everything. I think Wes has done great. I mean, I'm not knocking anyone out there, so please don't take it personal and, and take it that way. There's no way for us to keep up with everything that's being thrown at us, so, um, I'm really excited, and, and again, I'll push this every single time I get to push it. This is a position that all three communities, county and both cities, have come together to do. Um, and I think, so when it does, this message does go to Santa Fe, um, it's a united message of, hey, this is, this county is united, here's our message, a, and we'd like it to be heard. So, um, I think it's important, I think we, it's important we continue to push that message out to the citizens as to why this was so important, um, and why we're doing what we're doing. So I appreciate it, just that little short thing that you're already working on. I mean, those are huge impacts. Um, that Air Force one, we worked on for a full year. In fact, we ended up in Washington with second in charge of Air Force to discuss the issue. So, um, you know, it's things like that that, gosh, we don't have, we can't take them all on, each of us. We try, but, but it sure will be nice to have help, so I appreciate it. I'm glad to have you here. I think it's, it's a good message to send.
I greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Are there, Mr., come on.
Morning, good.
Mr. Wes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wes. Just wanted to go over a few of the projects that Community Services has been working on. Um, as you know, we submitted a build grant for twenty-five million for the improvements of the thirty-one two eighty-five intersection. That grant was not awarded. Um, there was one grant award for the whole state of New Mexico, and the good news is that was twelve point five million for this area, which will go to, uh, the two eighty-five construction on their Super Three. And talking to NMDOT, um, that's going to free up twelve point five million that they had budgeted to that project, and they want to, they, they want to move that money over to one twenty-eight. Um, that's a two hundred million dollar project. They've got sixty million budgeted for the design on that, so that'll increase it to about seventy-two and a half million dollars, um, for one twenty-eight. So we're happy that that's taking place. With that intersection, um, not getting that award, NMDOT is going to go ahead and, um, design that. Um, it probably won't have an overpass, but they're looking at moving that intersection nine hundred foot south and tying it in, um, at a, at a better angle so that traffic can make better turns, and also, uh, line of sight will be improved, and they're also looking at putting traffic signals and lighting that intersection. So it's a pretty good improvement. We're glad that NMDOT, um, is budgeted for that, um, and it should make that intersection a lot safer, so. The other thing, um, staff prepared two capital app, uh, capital appropriation requests. Um, one of them was for five million, and that was for the southeast loop. The other one was for one point five million, and that was for the southwest loop. Uh, I attended the hearings, um, for the five million and the one point five, uh, last week. Our legislators, in my opinion, supported the southeast loop more than any of the other projects that, that were out there and they heard on. Um, their recommendation to me is to try to push rather than just for the five million, to get the whole twenty-three million that was needed to complete that project. Um, so we've got some meetings set up with the governor's office. Um, we've also got some other meetings set up next week with some legislators that are outside of this area that want to help fund, uh, projects in this area. They're, the, understanding that the reason why the state's in the position it is is because of southeast New Mexico, so we're hoping to generate a lot more support there. And I will, um, um, Mr. Davis asked me if I'd kind of put a bullet point information type thing together for you all, so that if you're asked any questions, you know where we're at, what we're kind of looking for, um, where we're at in the design process and, and the construction process. So I'll get all that put together and, and sent out to you so that you have that information. Um, we've also been working on the twenty twenty census. We've got our Complete Count Committee together. Um, we've had three meetings and also a training with the state. Um, we've got, of course, we got grant funding for that. Um, we're, we're hiring a, a consultant to help us with our advertising and try to get educational documents put together so that we can get that out to the public and let them know what the importance of this count's going to be. So that's going real well. That, that committee consists of, of groups from Artesia, Loving, and Carlsbad, so it's a pretty diverse group, and everybody understands the importance of this count, so hopefully we can get that out there and get a lot better count, um, in twenty twenty. Uh, our staff is also working, still working with the city or the Carls, Carlsbad School District on housing of employees. Uh, they're going to be able to put a lot more effort in that now that the bond election's over and that passed, and so, uh, we'll be looking forward to more meetings on that and trying to do something to help get employees here into the county, so. Um, and then the, the last thing that we're working on right now is they look at starting construction on two eighty-five, probably early summer. Um, so what we're looking at is alternative routes to, to that. We know that that construction project's going to take a while, it's going to slow traffic down quite a bit, um, they're going to reduce it to one lane, and with the amount of traffic that's out there right now, it's going to be, it's going to be hu, there's going to be huge backups. So we're going to be talking with the industry. We're talk, we've already started talks with, uh, NMDOT to try to get, um, funding in order to improve these alternative routes that we would use, because we already know traffic's going to start trying to divert off, and the roads that are out there right now are not going to be able to handle this traffic. So if we can get everybody to work together and get the funding put in place and get these roads to the level that they can handle the traffic would be huge and hopefully help with the construction of two eighty-five and make that go a lot quicker, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you for your work. Shutting two eighty-five down doesn't sound like a very fun deal, but we got to do it.
Right. Commissioner. I don't, thank you so much for your help.
Thanks, Wes.
Thanks, Wes.
Thanks, Wes.
All, all my support's going to go to the Action Center, baby. Uh, but we want to share with you, the commission, um, we'll have another big crane downtown tomorrow morning. Uh, we're going to start a lot earlier to not impact traffic this time, because starting later didn't work out very good. Uh, but we did.
It was a good time.
We, we found a unit that was, it was older, twelve-plus years, it had a failed heat exchanger. Uh, replace, repair, which we elected to replace. That way we'll just have a new unit and not have to worry about, uh, noxious gases inside. Unfortunately, uh, the way it's placed on the detention center puts it in close proximity to some high voltage overhead wires, so we got to bring an even bigger crane to swing it over and do those types of things. Um, in addition to that, I have Johnson Controls starting the project of Fire Services, uh, Roof Care also starting some work at Fire Services and so, facilities and doing some stuff. What else we got?
That's it. We'll, uh, we'll be able to get the parking, it's going to be the other side, uh, by the bank side this time where the crane will be. So, uh, try to, I said, try to start laying, thinking people were at work and that, a lot of traffic through there in that area anyway.
Port of Massengill was able to coordinate a little better with Bicasita. She's allowing us to use some gravel parking across the street tomorrow morning, late this evening tomorrow morning, uh, so, uh, because we lost the parking at the theater as well, so. For that, I guess we'll stop for any questions.
How's our fence coming?
Oh, so administrative error, right? I had the quote and everything. Uh, city required a stamp set, a draw. City required a stamp set of drawings in order to put a fence above six feet, so we had one of those prepared, it's just a matter of getting down there and paying for the permits, so we can get that hammered out.
So, when do we think all that's gonna happen? When do we think we'll have a fence?
Then we'll really have to rethink it, a fence is a fence is a fence. I'm not sure why, when we go beyond six feet, that would require an additional design professional fee in order to get something done, but that's what the city requires, that's what Commissioner McCutcheon requested of us, and so that's what we're doing.
You think that'll be two months, six months?
We'll try to get it done as soon as possible, I don't see it going past December 31st.
We'll make a couple of calls and just chat a little bit and see if we can help that out.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Just wanted to give you a little update on a project that we're working on in the assessor's office.
First, first things first.
Give you a little project, I wanna give you an update on this project that we have that might impact your phone calls, that you love to tape from your constituents.
That's true.
So, we had our audit, and we got dinged quite a bit on our exempt properties about not having the proper applications for properties. They also found properties that were exempt that have been sold that shouldn't have been exempted. So, I asked Jimma to give me that project, and I went through all of the exempt applications that we had, and we removed exemptions on properties that shouldn't have been there. And we had a lot of exemption applications of properties that don't even exist anymore, so we did away with those. So, we went into phase two, which was pulling a report on all exempt properties in the county, which was probably about 250 pages, which totally scared me, but we have finally went, made it through all of them.
Because that includes the city and the county buildings.
City, county, BLM, everything in Eddy County. So, we have made it through them, and we have determined, we have many exempt properties that do not have applications, so when PTD comes in and does our audit, those have to be in, in the account to show that we did actually realize and look at the property that they do qualify for the exemption, and we have many that have exemption that don't qualify. So, I'm gonna tell you, the phones have already rung with us, I don't know if yours has yet, but I had a church in Artesia that just called recently that received many tax bills this year, because they moved into their nice, big church, and they're leasing the old church that becomes rental property, so that no longer qualifies for the exemptions, so those come back on. And so, we explained that to, to the pastor, and he also knew that before they moved into the new church, but he had a lapse of memory and forgot that conversation until he got those bills. The problem that they don't realize with their properties is, their church sits on the corner with their parking lot, and it actually might have 15 different parcels with that property, so each parcel gets a bill. So, just so you know, if you get any phone calls, when he called me on this one church, I think there was 11 parcels to that one piece of property for that church. So, we got that fixed, but in looking through all of the properties, which you might get some phone calls on, is we've come across where folks in the parish have passed away, and they deeded their property to the church. That does not qualify for an exemption, even though the church owns it, because the statute is very clear, and we clarified that with PTD of what the statute represents, and you have to be worshiping on that piece of property, or utilizing it for education, or something to do with the church.
80 acres sitting out in...
The middle of nowhere does not qualify, so. Presbyterian Church has, we have found two really huge tracts of land in the middle of nowhere where the airplanes fly over, and that's gonna be coming back on. So, just so you know what's going on in the assessor's office, so, we've made it through the properties, we're going to start today, or tomorrow, because we won't be in the office this afternoon. Tomorrow, the letters will start going out, and we're taking all the, I'm taking it upon myself to make it real easy for these, these folks, I will fill in everything that says, this is your legal, this is your address, please just sign the application so we can get it in your account, and then we will wait till those all go out to send out the ugly ones that say that your exemptions are coming off. We would like to get this done before we go into personal property starting January 1. So, it's gonna be fast and furious, but I just wanted you guys aware, your phone calls might start coming in, because they are already getting NOVs for exemptions that came off in 19.
So, we should have you on speed time?
What number do you want them to call?
Let me get the phone list and hand you the number. I already asked if I could put Jimma's name on the letter and Rhonda's extension on the letter. Unfortunately, it is a, it is a real-life situation that we had to, we had to tackle that's been kind of swept under the carpet for many years. We looked at applications from 1967, 1973. You know, we, it was a big project to this point, so, but we are gonna get it finished.
Were most of the properties you found religious properties, or what else would qualify as exempt? Just any 501(c)?
There's, no, Habitat for Humanity, churches, education.
Nonprofits, basically?
Not all, no, you don't have to, no, it has to be used for religious, educational, or those purposes. Just because you're nonprofit doesn't mean you're exempt.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Do you have another?
No, I'm good.
I had a, I had a question, 'cause I know one might fall in down there, and I don't know if it's the church you're talking about, but if a church leaves a building and then rents it to another religious organization, how does that work?
They don't own it, according to statute, it says they have.
So, it's still, so no matter what the usage of the property is, it doesn't?
We had a problem with a church that was up, used to be located off of Ritchie, not anymore, they moved into another building, you know what I'm talking about, and that building was never in their name, they were just leasing it, and they were having a fix, they were having to pay huge tax dollars, but statute is very clear, it has ownership.
It's gotta be owned by?
Yes, by whoever's using it, right.
Oh, okay.
Not by just owner of a church, it has to be, the church themselves have to be owned, the property.
And, and he, and that was another thing he spoke to me about, he said, well, do you know that the covenants say this property can only be used for a church, but for the person that owns it is the only person that's going to get the exemption, so they're leasing it, it becomes rental property, they're making money on it, and the people that are in there are not the owners, so the tax bills stand.
Menial, menial people that we are.
Fortunately, we didn't write the rules, we only have to go by them. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you for the heads up.
Well, just, do you want to let me just mention to you that I was open for anybody that wanted to donate, sick days, Rocky's having surgery today and he'll be out for a few weeks, and he doesn't have enough time to be off. So, you won't see him within the county probably for at least a couple of weeks.
Hope it goes well.
Or they'll crunch it in my pocket and they'll be there first.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you all again. A couple of updates, I was asked by Judge Whitlock to sit on, and she blamed me for even having the panel, because I, I was next to an article on teen suicide, and so she put me on a panel that we had over the weekend, and it went, it went very well. We had some real frank discussions about some issues relating to more, more south Eddy County, there wasn't a whole lot of participation, I don't think, I don't even know if it was opened up to northern Eddy County, I wish it would have been, because we, we covered a lot of stuff, so I just wanted to bring that, that up and say that it was very, I think it was very successful. I'm taking my executive privilege as president of New Mexico Counties, as everybody in here is aware, I've been making appointments to Eddy County folks, to boards, getting our representation on as many as we possibly can, and I just picked on our county manager and got, put him on one of our newly, our newly enacted boards, and I think it's gonna be a very effective board. And those appointments stay, generally, the incoming president will not, and I'm on good terms with the president who will be, our president-elect, I don't think he's gonna remove any of our folks from these boards, he does have that prerogative, but I think we're very well represented on all the different boards and committees that we have with New Mexico Counties. Now, the other thing is, yesterday I was, and I'm preparing a, an update on it, I'm gonna put out for public consumption, the White House contacted me and actually vice, actually, it was the President's Office contacted me, the Vice President stood in for him on the, on a conference call, and it was for the Governor's Initiative for Regulatory Reform. Interestingly enough, there were, I think, 12 governors from across the United States that were, were in on this, this conference call with the Vice President and with the, the Chief Financial Advisor, and a couple of others for the White House, and the interesting part was, our governor wasn't involved. The Commissioner Rebecca Long from Lee County and I were chosen to represent New Mexico. That speaks volumes, that we've got some issues that we need to address in New Mexico, and it was so, it was so heartening to hear, like, the Arizona Governor, the Idaho Governor, the, they, they spoke about what they're doing, and it was led off by Vice President Pence, who said, you know, the, when, when, when the President was elected, he said, for every new regulation we put in, he said, I vow we're gonna take two out. He said they failed on that. They actually have taken 81 out for every one, is what he said, 81 regulations for every one. Now, you can't keep that up, we'll have no regulations, but that just shows the commitment to that. And the same thing was spoken about in Arizona. Arizona is, is just, they're, they're, they're getting rid of superfluous junk, regulations that are stifling the market. Our market, and our market is thriving right now, but part of that is because of a lot of the, these regulation reform. And so, it was, it was talked about, and, and it kind of, it hit home with me, and I thought, you know, what are we doing in New Mexico? We're making more regulations. Instead of getting rid of some of these that, that, that don't work and that are stifling our market, what are we trying to do? We're trying to put in more regulations. Specifically, we're trying to put in all these regulations with oil and gas that, that can damage the golden goose, so to speak. So, I don't, I don't know what the good news is with that, it's, it's very disheartening that we, that they have to come to a county sheriff to represent New Mexico on a Governor's Initiative. I, I just, that, to me, I think we really need to start figuring out some better ways to do things. Now, it was, it was an honor, and I appreciate that they have that much faith in me, but I don't have that kind of, I, I don't have that, I'm, I'm not arrogant enough to think that I have that kind of authority, or that kind of stroke to get that stu, get, get stuff like that to happen. So, I really think we need to look at that. We've got some big challenges coming up, we, we just met with the Municipal League, our executive committees for New Mexico Counties, and Municipal League met so we could try and get our, our legislative priorities in line with each other, so we can be allies with each other, and, 'cause in the past, we've had some serious conflicts in where the counties are going and where the municipalities are going, so we're trying to get that more in line. And Director Fullgen Eddy and I have, have had some, some serious talks with our, with Steve Copelman, our executive director, trying to get everything ironed out. We know that, that things are coming that are gonna be distasteful for some of, a lot of our, our counties and a lot of our municipalities. We, and, and we know that the Governor's gonna call some things, you know, this is the short session, supposed to just deal with budget stuff, but she's gonna call some things that we're gonna have to deal with. So, we're trying to get our wagons, you know, circled up and, and, and work towards a common goal. With that in, in mind, Executive Director Copelman has asked me to go spend quite a bit of time up during this legislative session in Santa Fe, on New Mexico Counties dime, by the way, which is good, but he wants me to help work with our lobbyists in, in New Mexico Counties and work there, trying to maybe mitigate some of this stuff. I don't know, I don't know how, how well people are gonna, I don't know, we're hoping that the Senate is gonna be our backstop, like they have been in the past on some of this stuff that, that really affects us. So, that's what I'm hoping for. It's gonna be a very tense legislative session, it's gonna be fast and furious, 'cause it's, you know, the 30-day. So, that's where we're at, that's what we're doing, we're all very cognizant of, of what's going on. I appreciate the support for the New Mexico, I mean, the, the, the United States, Mexico, Canada Trade Agreement, had the day of action, the, Mr. Crozier at the White House contacted me, asked me if I would do some, some social media stuff for that in support of it, I'd had your blessing to do that, so I did. The day of action was the 13th, it just passed, I, I'm hoping we're gonna get the traction we need to get it passed. That's a big deal for us to, sadly, we're focused on other things that are of no consequence to that. So, we'll push forward with all that. The Sheriff's Office, we're obviously doing, doing what I think are great things over there, we're getting people hired, we stand to be potentially only two down here in, within another month or so, which is astounding, that'll be the most folks ever working for the Sheriff's Office ever. And so, we're branching out and we're trying to do a few different things with all the new push from the state, of course, and then the, the federal push from Attorney General Barr on the violent crime initiatives, we're ahead of the game here, just to let you know. We're, in Eddy County, we are way ahead of the game. I've already have partnership that, that we're in the midst of, of working on, and of course, because of the rules, I'll bring a, I'll bring the, the MOU to you folks to, to bless it, but with ATF, and we stand a very good chance of having a full-time ATF agent assigned down here to my office, working with my folks in my violent crime unit. We're about to have two full-time DEA agents, they won't be assigned to my office, but they're gonna be assigned to this area for Eddy County and Lee County. We just had a, an Assistant U.S. Attorney, a prosecutor, assigned to our area out of the Roswell, and that, that's out of Roswell, 'cause that's where the, the federal court is. That's a big deal, and some people don't realize how big of a deal that is, but we can go straight over there, we can get some, some federal cases, and instead of these folks getting these short terms where they get out on good time or whatever like that, they're gonna do some federal time, and they're gonna spend a lot of time. And these are the bad people, not, we're not looking at petty crime for that, this is violent offenders that put our citizens in danger, so we've got a lot of really good stuff going on, and so, I don't know, we're excited about a lot of this, and I'll, I'll answer any of your questions if you have any.
No, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other county elected officials or department heads?
Good morning again, Commissioners, from the fire service standpoint, I would really appreciate any extra help on getting these roads worked up, 'cause from a life safety and injury prevention standpoint, we're, from the volunteers and fire service, we're running a lot on these roads for accidents, and the sooner we can get them upgraded and a little better, the better it is for us, then we can concentrate our efforts on, on other things. It's taken a lot of our time, anybody in emergency services sees that, just this morning, there was two wrecks, fortunately, it was on the four-lane portion of 285. portion of two-eight-five south of town, but, uh, we're continuously getting calls for auto accidents along all these roads. Uh, any efforts to get them up and, uh, safe would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I do have, uh, one administrative thing that, um, we have a, we have a night meeting scheduled for December, um, nineteenth, or seventeenth, and, uh, there's a potential conflict legislative session, or legislative engagement that evening, and so, um, we, we were considering, um, changing that back to a, a day meeting and, or a morning meeting, a regular scheduled meeting. So, uh, um, I'll probably make that a, an agenda item for the December third commission meeting for your consideration. So, just an FYI. And I think it requires a, a vote and approval to change that schedule, so... But, uh, I think it's, the two events are both important, so we should see what we can do to accomplish both. No other updates? Um, we'll move to the travel request consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Come on, Ms. Anna.
I just wanted to introduce you guys to Ms. Casey Ardi. She is Charlie's new safety assistant, so she's a new face to HR and safety. So, y'all will be seeing her around.
Thank you, welcome.
So, I formally introduce her to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, my apologies. Now, we'll go to the travel con- request consent agenda.
Does anyone have anything they need to pull or question? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in second, please call for the vote.
Cutchin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Any emergency business? Don't believe we have any. And we've had some updates, but any specific legislative update? We've had some comments about what's coming, so we'll keep an ear for that. And I don't know that we have any legislators or other elected officials here. Seeing none.
Yes.
In, in terms of my comments, uh, let's try and keep them brief. I, I did agree to participate in, uh, NMC. It's the, it's a policy committee that, that Sheriff Cage and the President of the Agency is... I thought it was an opportunity to get to know more folks and to help have some input on some of the different policies. There's an item that's, NMC, they've combined their multi-line liability committee and their workers' comp committee, and so there will be one representative as opposed to two, so we'll have to select a voting member. That voting member will then, um, help elect the, the actual voting board membership. Um, so, I'll be working with Cass and the warden and, and Roberta on... We've had different folks serving on those two committees, they're now combined to one. And there's a regional member for southeast New Mexico, which encompasses five or six counties. And then there's a, um, it's a class or a population member, so we'll fall into this. So, there's two potential seats. So, Eddie County may not actually be sitting on that voting board, but the person we select will help vote who gets in. If we have, if we want to nominate anybody to sit on that board, we're able to do that, and they can be considered in the regional vote or the population vote for sitting as a voting member on a twelve-member board, I believe. So, we'll, we'll work on that, get that put together. If you have any suggestion or comments about, hey, we should have Cass sit on that board, or we should have Billy sit on that board, or whatever, right? But again, just, uh, just food for thought at that point. And then continue to work on consolidating information around the message. I used the words boom and boon last time. We're continuing to, to, to use that message about, "Help us help you." Uh, that will tie in with what Wes was talking about and helping to emphasize the needs, the cost of the boom, um, with, um, uh, what Travis had mentioned about road, road safety, road, you know, it's, it's really kind of a pipe dream, but, you know, fire services can, some of those monies be used to help improve the roads for that purpose. Don't know that they can, but again, lots of alternatives to consider and look at and try and how, how do we help improve the infrastructure. So, those are the kinds of things we're working on. Glad to have Mr. Fanning on board, he can help begin to reach out in some of these other areas, so, um, I think that, that's probably plenty for this point. So, thank you for your continued support. Alright, um, the next item on the agenda is executive session.
Oh, you got county commissioners.
Oh dang it, sorry. Scroll too fast, trying to hurry. I know you're, you're anxious for getting out of here. My sincere apologies for that oversight. It is now county commissioner comments and announcements.
Last Wednesday, um, Wes and I went to Hobbs and met with Senator Fulfer and Senator Kernan, uh, before their Capitol Outlay Meeting in Levington on Thursday. We had really good meetings. Again, they're definitely, um, the thirty-one loop is definitely high on their priority list. Um, they were super impressed with the amount of monies that we've received in private donations for the two-eighty-five-thirty-one, um, whatever that's going to be at this point. Actually, Gaye said that she was going to be talking about that, I don't know if she did at the Capitol Outlay Meetings. Wes is shaking his head that she did. She's also going to be mentioning that this week at the Legislative Finance Committee, so that's pretty big. They were super impressed, and when we told them that it was everybody from Sonic all the way up to Mosaic and, um, some of the other big oilfield companies, I mean, that's huge. So, that, um, speaks volumes for, uh, us when it's going to be, when it comes to the legislative session. I also am pretty upset because this is the first time in my seven years as a commissioner that we haven't had anybody from Eddie County representing us at the Legislative Finance Committee. Um, but it just couldn't happen, and we couldn't make it happen. The PSPs in Midland tomorrow and just, um, personal things with me, with my real job that actually pays the bills that I couldn't be up there. So, I think, um, Gaye had highly recommended that if somebody could be there, we would, but we will, um, circle back around with her after Thanksgiving. We also have a meeting set up with Representative Brown next week to talk about, um, what she's looking for and anything we can help that she can take back to Santa Fe from the county. So, lots of good things happening. Um, anyway, everybody have a great Thanksgiving, watch lots of football, put up Christmas decorations, enjoy your time with family, eat a lot of food, but whatever you do, just have a great time. And I'm sorry for those of you that have to work on Friday. Sincerely sorry.
So, the Christmas decorations downstairs are now on your head?
No, look at Tara. Can you ever see Tara? Man, I just hope she was able to get a Christmas tree finally.
We're trying to keep the barn doors closed, but now you've just busted them wide open. When you go down, it will nearly be fully decorated.
That's kind of my MO, right?
Uh-huh. Busting the doors, yes it is, ma'am.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, that kind of got off track.
I guess since we can't answer any questions, I was wondering how the Grinch sweater was coming.
No, we cannot answer any questions.
Okay. Good deal. Uh, just a, just a couple of... It, it looked great. Um, we've touched a little bit on, on county day up at legislative session. We'd like to be involved there and, and appreciate all the effort that's gone into planning that, and, uh, hopefully we can get up there and advertise a little bit to, to the rest of the state and get something good done there. Uh, I'd like to, uh, thank the warden and, and, uh, Brian for taking me on a tour of the jail, uh, a, a pretty extensive tour and got to see a lot of things in and out, kind of behind the scenes. It was a real big, real big eye-opener there, so I appreciate, uh, what they're doing to try to keep everything running down there and, uh, keep the inmates comfortable, but not too comfortable, I guess. Comfortable, as the governor says, we have to have the... Um, Cass will probably squirm a little bit for my, maybe my next comment here, but that's okay for Cass. Um, you know, we are coming up on Christmas season, and, uh, uh, whatever church, whatever religion you are, I would just encourage you to use this time to, uh, you know, renew, re- renew any, any, uh, commitment to that religion, whatever it is. In Alexis Dobville, in his book, Democracy in America, he said, "The strength in America was found in the churches." And so, I would like to encourage all the members of the county, members of the community to, to please renew your faith and, and to take this time to, to jump out and start giving thanks to the Almighty and, and worshiping in whatever manner you, you would. But, other than that, appreciate what everybody does and look forward to going, going forward and having a good Christmas season.
Um, last Friday, I had a chance to go up to Albuquerque, uh, to, uh, the ACNM, Associated Contractors of New Mexico. Uh, they allowed me to address their business meeting, uh, that Friday, and, uh, was kind of fun type thing. Uh, got to address, first thing I asked them was I said, "Can I have a show of hands of everybody that's got a new project going on in their communities?" And everybody stuck their hand up. And I said, uh, "Can I have a show of hands, uh, for all those projects that are using state funds?" And all the hands went up, and I said, "I just want to tell you that us from Eddie County are damn glad that you're using the money we're sending to Santa Fe to build your project." And so, I, I did want to get that in. Uh, I did have, uh, the chairman of the House Transportation Committee, the secretary of the NMDOT, and several other, uh, legislators there, and, uh, I did make a big pitch as far as, uh, what we're doing here in Eddie and Lee Counties in sending, uh, the money and supporting the budget of the entire, uh, New Mexico. Called to their attention that, uh, New Mexico was fourth in GDP last month, and, uh, that, that rise in GDP comes from two counties, that's Lee and Eddie County. So, I did call that to their attention and just wanted them to understand, uh, that as Al said, they need to help us help them. So, uh, and I did tell them that, uh, we would never apologize for asking the state legislature for money to support because we are the division that is supporting the other divisions of the state in New Mexico. Uh, so, that, and, uh, that might, they gave me a distinguished service award from the Associated Contractors, so, uh, I didn't tick off too many of them. And, uh, the other thing that I'd like to see, Mr. Chairman, uh, talking on a local level, is I would like for us to go over, uh, those, uh, problems, highway problems and road problems that are turned in on our internet on a monthly basis, so that we can have a disposition of those in our open meeting. That's me. Bye-bye.
Great. And I would concur with that. I would really like to maybe see a little more of the dressing on what, what folks are reporting, so, uh, I think it's real helpful. Um, I just, I got really quick things, um, things that I'm excited to see and have really opened up some great conversations at my house personally, but with these vaping issues that are going on and, and nobody really has a clue what's happening. I know Artesia's taken a pretty good stance and done quite a few, uh, my kids, they were real upset they were going to have to sit through this three-hour presentation, but then, then by the time they got home, uh, they thought it was pretty interesting. And, and, you know, I'm glad to see some people really getting out there ahead of some of this stuff, the vaping. Um, the gentleman presenting really dug into the marijuana issues as well, that, that, I don't know how they go hand in hand, my, my kids couldn't help me get to that relation. Uh, I hate both, so I'm okay with it. Um, if you're a vapor, I'm not against you, I just, you know, it looks like you're on fire sometimes, and it worries me. It does. I'm like, oh my goodness, that's a ton of smoke coming, or whatever that is, and, and it's a lot. But, uh, I don't understand what that is. Um, and, and so, I'm glad somebody's trying to explain it to us, uh, because that is my ignorance. I mean, you see all this come out, I, I don't know what that is. It's not smoke, so I don't know. Um, so, proud of Artesia, I, I'm sure y'all are doing it up here as well. I just know my kids have been going through it. Um, there've been great conversations, like I said, it leads to the marijuana discussion, which I'm assuming, uh, we're going to have to address at the state level. Uh, that's, we address it every year, that's a concern that's coming down the pipe for us, and I really think that's going to be, uh, one more thing that we just are going to have to deal with, and it's going to be really negative for the, the state. Glad they're doing these conference calls. What, what the sheriff said is something that I think we all say, glad you're, you're started on the "You're Welcome" campaign to the rest of the state. I think that's what needs, the, the campaign needs to be. If you take our industry away, the state has nothing. And, and anybody that thinks this state's going to survive without it, um, go live in Albuquerque in a fantasy, because that's where you're going to have to live, because that's all it's going to be. Uh, there is nothing else. I mean, uh, we've destroyed agriculture with all the regulation, we've destroyed so much stuff and made it so difficult for these folks to survive. We've got to start helping, um, agriculture and these things come back and thrive like they used to. But, but we've just overregulated them, now we're gonna, you've taken lumber away, agriculture away, now we're trying to take oil away. What else does New Mexico really have left? I mean, there's so many movies you can shoot here, and we pay them so much money, I'm not sure we're really going to make a lot of money back. So, not really sure what their game plan is there. Uh, hopefully, no one up there ever opens a business, because I don't think they're going to make it, because their ideas just don't work. First responders in Artesia, uh, obviously, as y'all have seen, it's, it's a lot like the county, but, but they're very, very short. Um, they had a newspaper article on it recently, uh, so, you know, any, any thoughts, any help, anything we can do for Artesia, that's great. Um, I know they're really short on fires, police, just like we have been for great. I'm glad to hear that we're, we're kind of catching up on that, but it's not like we don't have our shortfall in jails and, and everywhere else. So, uh, it's a huge issue for the county, I know we're working hard on it. I think a lot of it has to do with housing. Um, seems to be some housing projects hopefully coming that, uh, might help address that, I don't know. Um, but, but we're going to have to start getting really aggressive on something, because we're seeing it everywhere, and it's, it's, it's affecting the, the town I love. So, that's all I got, that's super exciting. I mean, I did a lot of other things, but no one needs to, it's not that exciting, so...
Thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, she's got...
I just want to say, pray for my son as he flies home from Japan on Friday, again. Thank you.
Quit opening the candy. We'll now move to executive session.
He's eating it.
That's harsh.
Just trying to take the heat for her, you know? Open it up, feed it to her. It's a fall guy.
He's a woman.
Alright, so let's make a motion, go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session, executive session to discuss, in accordance with New Mexico, with the State of New Mexico Open Meanings Act, Section ten dash fifteen, dash one, dash eight, eight, which authorizes board county Commissioners go into executive session to discuss real property.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Cutchin.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
How long are we going to be?
For the item that's there, probably ten, fifteen minutes is all.
Because they're already open.